Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
I am present.
Vice Chair Treese?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here, thank you. On the agenda, we previously had an item 12, but we don't anymore. So, the consent agenda has 21 items. That's the only agenda change. Would everyone join me in standing up and saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with us for up to two minutes, an individual, 10 minutes total. In this first part, Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Chair Harrington. The first two we have up is Stephen Hillinger and Senator Nelson.
Yep, just go ahead and have a seat. You get to go first, Mr. Hillinger. Hillinger?
Hillinger.
Hillinger, thank you.
Thank you, county commissioners. My name is Steve Hillinger. I live in Washington County for the last 32 years. We live in a rural neighborhood in Helvetia, and for several elections, I have also served as a volunteer to encourage registered voters in my area to vote. It's proven to be one of the most effective ways to get out the vote, and yet, it's still very hard to get people to vote. This past election for school board, I got only 36% of my people, and even that was higher than the 22% that the whole county had. Vote by mail makes voting easier, plain and simple, especially in a neighborhood like ours. Some people want Oregon to return to the antiquated vote-by-person system. That would be very difficult for our neighborhood because rural voters face very different issues than urban voters. Before vote by mail, we voted at the West Union Elementary School. It's not that far from our home, but it's a long way from Portland, where many people must drive to work. Voting in the morning before getting on Highway 26 at the peak of rush hour makes it hard to get to work on time, and this is only exacerbated and worse for people who are dropping off kids. Getting the polls, on the other hand, by 8:00 PM could also be problematic with traffic and picking up kids. In-person voting makes it hard for working people and parents in our neighborhood to vote. Poor weather, of course, is another problem. County roads just aren't plowed or sanded. People live on dirt roads at higher elevations and also sometimes above the snow level. Helvetia Road and West Union regularly flood in heavy rains, making the roads sometimes impassable. Accessibility impacts the most reliable voters also, our senior citizens. They use canes, walkers, wheelchairs. In-person voting disenfranchises many of them. On the other hand, vote by mail is a secure and safe system. It's been used successfully in Oregon for over 20 years. The move to eliminate it is just an attempt to fix a nonexistent problem. We need greater participation in our democracy, not less. Keep mail-in voting.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, please. We gotta talk.
Happy to talk.
All right. Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. My name is Sandra Nelson. I'm a resident of Washington County. A few days ago, I heard again this vignette that I expect all of you have also heard, but it's a good reminder of basic reality and worth retelling. A battleship was on exercise at sea in bad weather in the darkest part of the night, while the ship's captain cautiously piloted his warship through the fog-shrouded waters. The lookout spotted a steady light on the starboard side. It appeared they were on a direct collision course with that ship. The captain ordered the lookout to signal to the other ship, "Change course 20 degrees. We are on a collision course." The signal came back, "Advisable for you to change course." The captain signaled, "This is the captain. Change course 20 degrees." The reply came back, "I am a seaman second class. You must change course 20 degrees." The captain was furious. He sent back, "I'm a battleship. Change course." That came the signal. "I am a lighthouse. Your call." One simple takeaway from this wisdom story is that there is such a thing as a lighthouse, something that is firm, fixed, solid, unchanging, and helpful for people in the dark. For our nation's people and founding fathers, that lighthouse seems to have been our Declaration of Independence, our Constitution, and the Bible, which powerfully influenced the culture of our founding 250 years ago and have served as the lighthouse of our country. It was to defend these solid realities that soldiers were willing to die. This is our heritage. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we have been remembering those soldiers who died to defend our liberty and our one nation under God, under you. Please help each one of us, including our government officials, to continue to heed the lighthouse that you've given to us. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Miller and Trish Ruby.
Ms. Miller? Hello. Thank you for letting me talk to you. I hopefully won't take up the full two minutes. I have a business next to Project Homeless Connect, and they have been doing strides of getting things to be better, but yet, we still hear continuous yelling. There's continuous people outside. There's lots of trash. There's lots of human waste that we have to deal with every day. And we are just asking that maybe if they're given funds that they are able to move to a different place that's not quite so congested with all the businesses that are around them. We know that they are trying. We have tried to do a good neighbor agreement, but they cannot enforce anything, even if we have a good neighbor agreement. They cannot enforce anything that happens outside of their walls of their building. And so, we're left dealing with people that are peeing in our parking lots, pooping in our parking lots, causing all sorts of issues, screaming and yelling as we're trying to conduct business every day. And so, it's very disruptive to all of our businesses. And I'm not the only one that has these issues. But we're just asking that maybe if you do fund them, that they find an alternate location, maybe further down by the pods that you're putting in. Somewhere down there that might be a little more convenient for them to maybe get into the pods for housing, and also, not as many businesses are down that direction. So, it might be a little better location for them. But I do understand that they are trying. We are there responding to our requests, but it is still not a fun situation. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Ruby?
Ruby.
Ruby.
Sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you for listening to us, commissioners and chairs. I have been very involved in this, and my business has been in Hillsborough. My father-in-law was a dentist. My husband was a dentist. His brother and my son is now a dentist. Our building has been ransacked in the last four years so many times, I can't even tell you. The latest one is our back gate was torn off. They've torn off parts of our fence to build fires. They throw parts of our fence up onto our tile roof, which breaks the roof tiles and causes even more damage. Giving money is one thing that we're asking that it comes with direction, maybe security, to not put so much pressure on our forces. The police force are amazing. They are great, but they are stretched thin, and their budget is going down. I worry that you guys will fund this, build it, and then there's no money to continue it going. Wouldn't it be better to funnel it to someplace like Open Door versus Project Homeless? Open Door has a steady track record. Our crime rate has increased severely in the last four years. If a business is actually doing what they should, it should not be increasing, but it is. And it is leveling up. I mean, I've replaced my fence now three times, three times because of the damage that's been done. We're a small business, and we've taken a hit because of having people, as they call them, their friends around. And I mean, they're around. I understand that you went to go see them, Madam Chair, but that was during the winter, and it was basically a snowstorm. I would encourage you guys, please, reach out to us because we need a little teeth in this good neighbor agreement if something's gonna happen. Thank you.
All right. The last we have for this 10-minute period is Charlie Henderson. Charlie? Are you gonna five? Okay. All right. We have just time for one more. Would any member online via Zoom wish by public comment for up to two minutes allow you just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda, which consists of 21 items. One set of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, seven items from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, two items from Housing Services, two items from Health and Human Services, and eight items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have the opportunity to appoint Elizabeth Teigen as a public member and reappoint Vinod Singh as an industry member to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee, each with terms ending March 31, 2029. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to make the appointments to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have a presentation on the Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly Update. And we have two of our leaders here in the housing domain to take us through the information. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, and I am the Director of Housing Services. Before we get into our presentation, I do want to introduce a new key member of our executive team, Ryan Bonzbach, right there, who's our new Deputy Chief Financial Officer. Ryan comes to Washington County after 13 years at the U.S. Forest Service, where he recently served as the Director of Budget and Financial Management for the Northwest Region, managing over a $1 billion budget. And he comes to us highly qualified with both a J.D. and an M.B.A., and he has been here three weeks, and we cannot be more thrilled. Tonight, your board is going to hear from some key staff on our progress of two voter-approved measures, the Metro Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services Program, as well as a very special guest who agreed to join us on our panel tonight, Vernon Baker, Executive Director of Just Compassion, a Tiger-based, community-based organization. We figured you'd want to hear other voices from just us from time to time, and especially from the people who are more directly transforming lives. Thank you, Vernon, for joining us this evening. Next slide. I also get the honor of highlighting some notable, exciting milestones this past quarter. First, we celebrated the opening of over almost 200 new affordable homes built with Metro bond funds. Plumbek Gardens and AlTura, whose grand openings were just this past quarter, and they are both located in high-opportunity neighborhoods in Washington County. We also celebrated the grand opening of the Just Compassion Resource Center, which is the first S.H.S.-funded access center to open its doors. And Vernon gets to share the highlights later. And we also broke ground on the first year-round permanent shelter in Hillsborough. So, this quarter, we are gonna be shifting things around. We're gonna be starting with our updates of our affordable housing and then get into our Supportive Housing Services updates, starting with Assistant Director Chen.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly, and thank you for being here. My name is Jill Chen. I'm the Assistant Director of the Department of Housing Services. And... As Molly mentioned, we had celebrated two grand openings, AlTura and Plumbek. And thank you all for being at Plumbek. I saw many of you there, and we really appreciate your presence. A short summary and overview of the Affordable Housing, Metro Affordable Housing Bond. It was $118 million, and that was the original allocation, which is now fully allocated. We have 10 projects that's completed out of 12, and then there's two additional projects that's still in the pipeline, bringing a total of 813 projects, new affordable homes in all of our localities. The Housing Authority owns two projects. That's the Valfrey, as well as the Hartwood. And we will have the third project, Aloha 209. On this slide, you've seen it before. This is the location of all of our 12 projects, and it is spread throughout the county in... You all know that, Tiger, Forest Grove, Aloha. The list is quite extensive, for a total of 958 units. Next slide. In terms of our progress towards meeting all the metrics of the Affordable Housing Bond, we have exceeded every single metric, especially if we look at the total number of units, an 18% success overage of those that are family-sized units, 22% over of those that are very low-income, 8% over, and also, 27% for those for permanent supportive housing, which we have woven with the Supportive Housing Measure. Quick summary of the projects that's still in the pipeline. Woodland Hearth, that already closed, financially closed and is in construction. We expect that to be completed next, middle of next year. That is a project in Tigerd with Community Partners for Affordable Housing for 63 units, almost $10 million in Metro bonds. And the other project is Aloha 209. That is for 86 units, almost $13 million. And that is a project that the Housing Authority is currently in the process of applying for additional funds at the state. And we expect to have that completed by the end of 2027. Short summary of the new potential opportunities for the Affordable Housing Bond is that there are two additional tranches that are not included in our total numbers. The first is the interest earnings that are funding our permanent supportive housing. That is for $6.7 million. And we already signed the Intergovernmental Agreement from last year. This is for our Forest Grove Permanent Supportive Housing, in which we have identified the site, and we're in the process of doing a due diligence. The other funding is we have heard from Metro that about $5.5 million will be made available. And we are finalizing, we expect that the finalizing of the IGA sometime in the next couple of months. And this will be for new development. We're looking at potentially Brugger Road or Elm Street. This particular tranche will also include $341,000 in additional administrative fees to cover our cost of operations. These total additional funds are not included in our Metro production target, and we expect to have over an additional 100 units. That's the totality of our Affordable Housing Bonds.
Good question. So, where is Brugger Road and where is Elm Street that you're referring to here?
Sure. Brugger Road is in Bethany, and Elm Street is in Forest Grove. And we'll pass it on to the next speaker.
Next speaker. Great. Can I move on over? Hello, Chair Harrington. Members of the Commission, for the record, Nicole Steng. Thanks for your patience as we're playing some musical chairs and getting the next set of presenters up here. I'm eager to be with you to share some updates and information from the Supportive Housing Services Measure, as well as share and reshare, rather, the results of the 2025 point-in-time count. On this slide, you'll see a chart of what is the increase in homelessness in our region, well, rather, our county, but matched across our region in the last few years. This is, of course, driven by economic factors, but reflected in our resources and those coming in for services. I want to particularly call out where we differ from the rest of the state. Statewide, it's around 60% of people experiencing homelessness, do so unsheltered, on the streets. We have that reverse trend in Washington County, and that is because of Supportive Housing Services Measure. 75% of people experiencing homelessness in Washington County can do so with a county-funded shelter or an other homeless services-funded shelter. We're really grateful to be able to offer that humanitarian response to people. And we see that humanitarian response continue to work as folks move into permanent housing. We found an analysis comparing our 2024 sheltered count, folks experiencing sheltered homelessness last year. 70% of those people are now housed. And when thinking about what our system is meant to do, it's meant to respond to someone experiencing homelessness, bring them into shelter, and move them onto permanent housing where they can remain stable. So, what we see reflected in our point-in-time count is nothing surprising, but it's evident of what we continue to notice every day. Folks fall into homelessness more and more every day, and our system welcomes them with open arms, helps them move on to their next phase, and frees up that slot to serve the next person. So, we'll continue to see need in our community. That need might continue to grow, but we're really proud of the system we've built that can be responsive to those factors beyond our control. And as we continue to think about how we're responsive to the factors beyond our control, I'm excited to have Vernon Baker of Just Compassion join us and share out and report out what we often share as our updates, but really are the updates of our service providers. I'll turn things over to Vernon to provide some of those updates.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of County Commissioners, Chair Harrington. It's a privilege to be here on this evening. We just wanted to share some of our funded program highlights for the fourth-year, third quarter, which Just Compassion is happy to announce that we're part of what's taking place. Of course, my name is Vernon Baker. I am the Executive Director of Just Compassion, and again, it's honored to be here. When we speak about our shelter, our new shelter and access center, which we had our grand opening in March, and Governor Kotek was there also, Chair Harrington, Mayor Lube, Molly Rogers, and several other county employees, and it was just a wonderful community celebration of a lot of hard work, dedication, that was put together to make this happen. This is actually our first phase, phase one, of our campus project. But our shelter and access center is of tremendous importance to our community for the simple fact it gives us an opportunity to have a greater influence and a broader touch to those who are in need. Having a 60-bed shelter to provide services to those individuals who are homeless or experiencing other kinds of homeless-related situations, it just creates more opportunity for us to touch those individuals moving from a 20-bed shelter to a 60-bed shelter. I think that speaks for itself. And as far as our access center, we really appreciate having the ability now to... We see up to 75 people a day so far coming in for meals and other things. But not only is that important, but it gives us an opportunity to touch them and start their journey in the directions that will lead them ultimately, we hope, to permanent housing. So, we really are appreciative for all the support from the county regarding us being able to do this. In addition to that, we're also going to be able to expand our severe weather touch with our access center by being able during inclement weather in those serious situations where people really don't need to be outside. For the most part, nobody needs to be outside in any case, but during those severe weather situations, it's really important for us to be able to expand the scope of the number of individuals that will come in and have a dry place to sleep, have a Warren's meal, and again, be able to meet with our outreach staff, our housing liaisons, and other individuals from our communities that are working with us. We also are working with Sequoia, who's coming in to provide some mental health services, behavior, and peer support specialists, that we're giving our guests that, like, we like to call it, their wraparound service model, where they can be touched no matter where they are and what their needs are. So, we really appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that with the new facility that we have. Then, as it relates to other opportunities that are taking place outside of Just Compassion, our system has exciting advancements. We're eager to see the new recovery transitional housing program come into life at the hotel the county has recently purchased. And with this, that transitional housing piece, I've always felt was significant in the journey of the guests that we provide services to. I know initially, there was a lot of emphasis put on housing first, which is great, but sometimes our guests have to be able to grow to the point where they're able to be independent, living by themselves, for themselves. And so, this transitional housing project is gonna be extremely important in helping those guests gain those skills needed so they can go from a transitional situation to a permanent housing. So, we're looking forward to that. Is it time for the next slide? As it relates to our third quarter progress on metric and goals, taking another step back, our homeless services system of care has met or are on track to meet all of our metric goals, which is a testament of itself. Because when we start looking at all the things that we're doing and all the different programs and services that we have in place, to see that we're meeting or exceeding is a tremendous accomplishment. As you can see, permanent supportive housing placements, out of 450 placements year-to-date, we have 387 that are housed, refahery housing placements. The goal is at 300. We're at 222 currently. Shelter capacity provided, there's 385 actual beds and 385 are actually filled. And then, as far as the eviction prevention program, I think this is gonna be one that's extremely important because if we want to reduce and eliminate houselessness as a whole, we have to prevent people from being unhoused. And so, this eviction prevention program, which is serving 1,001, is just a great testament to what's taking place and all the support efforts and emphasis placed on all things houselessness. So, I just feel that the county, along with our partners, have done a great job. We look forward to continuing. And we just, you know, we just want you all to know that we truly appreciate our partnerships and the collaboration and what we can effectively do moving forward.
Dr. Baker, I just want to thank you for your leadership in the Tigerd community and more broadly in Washington County. And what, you know, I'm proud of what ended up getting built. I know I wasn't mayor when it opened, but I know we started the funding journey during my time as mayor, and I just really appreciate your leadership and speaking. It's good to see you. Thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate you as well. I miss our commercials and our interactions.
Great. And now, you're kind of back to the boring old county stuff, but it's been great to have you with us, Vernon. You're welcome to stay up if you'd like. I'll share some nonmetric updates as well. Of course, we've remained busy, and I'm excited to share. We officially, last quarter, launched our culturally-specific organization cohort. This board might recall. This has been a long-term goal of ours. We're really eager to get that off the ground. It was very timely. Our first meeting was focused on the hard budget reductions we had to make for next fiscal year and some factors and considerations and how staff applied those budget reductions to individual contracts. We have a lighter topic for our next meeting, which is actually tomorrow, but that group will continue to meet quarterly and provide direct advice and guidance to our program teams as they work through some complex issues and tackle some of the most intractable problems our system... our system is dealing with. Along with that important advancement in equity, I'm really excited to share, thanks to the help of Multnomah County Homeless Services, we have launched a regional racial equity lens tool known as the RHELTS. We're incredibly grateful for the team at Multnomah County who provided multiple trainings for our staff in a train-the-trainer model. We're really grateful, they spent a lot of time with us and with Clackamas County to use their expertise to support our staff and our learning. We had a near 100% attendance from the homeless services team in that training. I think a few folks were on vacation when it was offered. It was not for lack of excitement or effort. And I'm really eager to share, we've already been using the RHELTS in our decision-making, including the Cornell Road Recovery site that Vernon mentioned. We've done a series of racial equity tool lens reviews on that, and will continue to do so as that program progresses. And that program was also supported by the Lived Experience Advisory Committee. They advised us on site design for both permanent supportive housing sites and transitional housing sites, as well as programmatic designs and considerations for both. It was a really engaging in-person conversation. I promise, we didn't quite schedule it this way, but the next Lived Experience Advisory Committee is happening tomorrow as well, thanks to the City of Hillsborough. Their library is hosting us tomorrow, and we'll be discussing coordinated entry and, excuse me, rather, I'm getting myself mixed up. That was a few meetings back. We'll be discussing what is needed for mission-driven property management in alignment with the tri-county planning body's landlord recruitment goals. So we're excited to get that feedback into the larger regional plan, and are grateful for our partners at Metro for supporting this and bringing in our folks with lived experience into those decision-making and advisory spaces. And that's been a lot, but there's a lot more coming down. I've mentioned Cornell Road a couple times here. We're really excited to have both that site launching with a design RFP on the streets, as well as soon-to-be-released a RFP to select a site operator. We've had some conversations with the community. They've shared their excitement and concerns, and we've heard those with open ears. We'll continue to have informal conversations, and then, once our site operator is selected, we'll begin more formal engagement to develop that good neighbor agreement. I want to thank the nearby church, the nearby school, the neighbors for their open and engaging dialogues. In addition to that, we continue to make progress on looking for a pod site. As this board knows well, we have to cite 60 pods in the next year or so, really within the next six months, and we're actively looking. If you know of any sites for sale, please give us a call. And the other exciting news is we're getting ready to break ground on multiple access centers, and we're, I'm sure, as you drive by the Hillsborough shelter site, you're seeing just how quickly that's coming up. I'm excited to share that is ahead of schedule, and we're looking forward to that opening by the end of the year. And last, certainly not least, we're continuing to plan for and prepare for the launch of new programs. The new program mentioned there now has a name. We're calling it the Rapid Resolution Program, and are continuing to engage with providers and the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council on how we think about and design that program. So a lot more in the work. We're staying busy, and I will turn it over to Jess to tell just how busy we're staying.
Indeed. Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Chair Harrington. Jess Larson, for the record, one of your Assistant Directors in the Department of Housing Services. We have quite the packed agenda for you tonight. I'm continuing on this staff presentation with a new item for your consideration, draft framework for how we make decisions to invest one-time funds going forward here, created in support of the Supportive Housing Services Program. So you've heard us say many times that year five is a year of system optimization. We're not growing anymore. We're, in fact, going to be, we've had to reduce some of our capacity due to reduction in forecasted revenues, and so we are really focused on our system optimization practices to further improve how we are serving our community and hope to be able to continue to keep up the pace of serving our community. And some of that system optimization work is just better process management. And so this process for your consideration tonight, we hope will bring clarity and transparency to our decision-making with our resources that are created through one-time carryover of revenues from the previous year into the next fiscal year, or any new one-time funds that are granted into the homeless services program. As you may know, Metro is considering a transfer of administrative funds that would be one-time funds, so it's a timely consideration, or timely framework for your consideration. So this is just an, as you will recall, slide where we were at. We brought this table to you in one of our February presentations. This is a plan for our current one-time investments that were, where we started this current fiscal year from. So much of these funds have already been allocated. Many of the checks have already been written, and the balance is no longer correct, but this has been our plan of this year for where we are making one-time investments in our system. We've frankly had an unusual opportunity here in Washington County from one-time funding from the first two program years of supportive housing services revenue, where we saw both an unexpected collection rate for two years in a row, and we hadn't yet reached program capacity. Our partners were still signing contracts and hiring staff, so our expenditures were quite low, which led to the opportunity for making these one-time investments in our system, especially building out infrastructure that was sorely needed to be able to provide these services. You've heard about some of the grand openings of those infrastructure investments, and also being able to continue service levels of programs that were expanded during COVID with ARPA funding. Sadly, these funds will probably spend out, and we won't be able to, we aren't planning to be able to sustain those levels, but we are going to see this investment plan through. And so what we are bringing forward is sort of the what next after this investment plan that expires or completes its cycle. It's also important to note that part of our one-time funds have helped to fill our reserve banks. We didn't have to do that over time. We were able to use all of those one-time funds in the first years to fully complete our contingency reserves and our stabilization reserves, which are in place to help us weather any unforeseen financial circumstances to stabilize the program. And also, we have carried forward regional investment funds that have had to be reserved for the purposes as intended through the, sorry, prescribed by the tri-county planning body. As you will recall, we brought forward a recommendation to allow the utilization of those funds for transition costs as we ramp down programs and pay for staffing positions for the next six months as our partners ramp down programs in their contracts in next fiscal year. So the tri-county planning body has allowed the use of those funds, and we're expecting to utilize that reserve bank up to help the program transition in the next fiscal year. So this brings us to where we are today, and the purpose for this framework, really just sort of outlining that going forward, we're not going to have this abundance of resource of one-time funds. We're going to face competing needs with limited resources and some unpredictability in the funding. So we are recommending a staff, a draft framework, that will guide how we prioritize all one-time funding in the future, from funds that are carried over from one fiscal year to the next, and any one-time grants that may be received. And this here is that draft framework for your consideration. So we've organized these priorities into three buckets, if you will. First, we have the financial protections, such as addressing any unanticipated funding gaps that are due to sudden reductions in revenue, so that we can stabilize those programs and ramp them down mindfully, as we have been able to do this year. As you know, we are facing many headwinds in many funding sources, and so it's important to first shore up programs that face these challenges. And additionally, we would recommend that we first restore funding in any reserve accounts that were needed, were spent down in any of those challenging fiscal years, so that we can restore those fundings for future fiscal challenges that the program faces. Then, the second set of priorities might be considered as sort of our long-term stability plan for the program, addressing any current capital gaps that are in projects that are underway. You all know that we have unforeseen capital gaps. Our partners are likely to come forward with those. We want to make sure we can continue with those projects we've invested in, and we might need to address those gaps. Similarly, as we've invested in this critical infrastructure to provide our homeless services, we anticipate the long-term reinvestment needs of those capital projects. So we would recommend considering a future reserve that would fund those capital reinvestments of that infrastructure over time through a clear and yet-to-be-developed process. And last, consideration for any temporary expansion of services that would address urgent community needs. We would want to be mindful that these are one-time funds, so that the expansion would be temporary, but as you know, eviction prevention can temporarily expand, sometimes our rapid rehousing, and there are other places we can look towards temporary expansion of programs to better serve our community. And then, in boon times, perhaps, there are opportunities to go into that third level of priorities, where we're looking for new community wins, such as investing in the system and our providers with additional capacity-building projects. We've done a lot of capacity building with our initial one-time funding. This might be an opportunity, there might be an opportunity in our future, to consider further such investments. And last, if the opportunity presents itself, considering new capital projects to continue expanding our homeless services capacity in our system. So this is a framework for your consideration. I'll go to the next slide, because we also want to describe the process for making these decisions, so that might be the prioritization of how we invest funds. But we need an annual timeline, so we are recommending that one-time funding be calculated after August 15th, which is when we receive our final revenues for the Supportive Housing Services Program and have closed the books on the previous fiscal year, and we know how much one-time funding there is to plan for in the next year. Then staff would prepare recommendations for your board's consideration to be presented based on a framework such as was presented here tonight. Any budget adjustments may be made if board is directed to address any current fiscal year needs in that October budget adjustment period, or in February, if better suited for later in the fiscal year. But then, most adjustments would be, or budgeting would be planned in the next fiscal year for those future one-time investments. And then, of course, the board might consider any mid-year recommendations that change to respond to any new emerging needs in our community. So this is a draft framework for your recommendation to help guide future one-time investments going forward, because the opportunities we've experienced over the last few years are not likely to continue, and we're anticipating to have to make some challenging decisions with competing needs and limited resources in the future. And with that, we turn it over to your board for questions and feedback. Any questions on the Affordable Housing Bond program? I might invite my colleague Jill to join us, and then, any on the Supportive Housing Services Program, and then, your board's feedback on this draft framework.
Could we just go back first to the one-time funding framework? So you presented the three themes or priorities for it, and then you presented the next slide, which talks about annually, you would have information around the middle of August to see, okay, so how did things land for that fiscal year that just ended, and are there any one-time potential funds for programming? You would also then follow up with that to see if you have any recommendations using that framework. And so the board would then be engaged at that time to see, okay, yes, there is an opportunity, and if there isn't, then skip it, but see if it would be appropriate, and then, if the board wants to make a change that can then go into what's then the new fiscal year, or wait until a subsequent timeframe. Is everybody clear on that? Okay, great. Okay, so if we could go back to your questions and feedback. First, board member, any questions on the Affordable Housing Bond? It's just terrific news. Everybody's been rocking it.
Yes, yes. So I think we've got three cheers from the dais, at least. Any feedback or questions on the Supportive Housing Services Program and how things are going according to the goals?
I don't have a, but I have a, first of all, good to see you, Vernon, as well, and great presentation, staff. I do have a question. You probably said this, but which account is this funds will be drawn from? Did you say that information, and I missed it? I'm trying to, the reason why I ask which reserve account is going to be drawn is, is there a recommendation to sort of have a balance in that account that you're recommending?
Commissioner, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding your question, so let me try to take us back where I think you're referencing our reserve accounts.
Yeah, so this is the reserves, if I follow you correctly. And then, the slide before, you're showing an example of one-time investments that we've made so far.
This is actually our current one-time investment plan, so it's not an example, it's actually what is currently happening.
Yeah. Excuse my language, the actual one. There's no such thing as example. Got it. And then, so I'm wondering, what's the fund balance in that account, then, so that...
Thank you. I think I understand your question. So part of the reason why we are recommending that one-time funds can't fully be considered until August 15th is we need to close the fiscal year in order to understand what the balance is that is carried forward into the next fiscal year. So we don't have that exact answer of what our current balance is. Many of these contracts have already been written. Some of them have been partially funded and are underway. Others have been fully expended. And also, another component of what will affect that one-time, sorry, that end fund balance of our fiscal year is what are the actual revenues that we receive? Because as you know, we're basing our programmatic work on forecasted revenues. And then, what are the actual expenditures, which is really critical this year, because we started the programmatic year with a budget anticipating revenue that was later retracted in the updated forecast by about $15 or $16 million. So both of these unknowns leave us in a place needing to wait until we close out the fiscal year to understand what are our opportunities for one-time investments going forward, if any, or...
And then, to follow up on that, the last question is, first of all, I think it's really good to have a framework, because it sort of creates a fair process for especially our service providers, and how they can tap in and what the prioritization looks like. So I appreciate this. I think there's been a lot of questions about how we've made the one-time commitment investments before, and I know I've gotten those questions, so I appreciate the transparency and the process creation that you went through. The first priority or priorities that you listed, financial protections, I assume, I'm just going to frame it, or is it correct to say eviction prevention is looped into that first priority?
No, actually, the consideration for expanding eviction prevention programming beyond what is budgeted in that fiscal year would be considered a second-tier priority, along with that, the third bullet. The bullets are not meant to be prioritized in any order, but a second-tier priority, if you will, of temporary expanding eviction prevention programming beyond the current budgeted capacity for that fiscal year with one-time funds.
Well, what's happening at the federal level and funding withdrawn and stoppage that's happening, I can see a storm coming where eviction prevention funding dollars, especially from the federal, are impacted, or will, could be impacted, probably is the better word to say. Now, how would that not be addressing unanticipated funding gaps due to revenue reductions when that qualify in that first priority?
Thank you for that question. That's helpful and clarifying. I'm not actually aware of any eviction prevention funds that are federally funded at this time. There was certainly a significant expansion during COVID with ARPA funds, but those funds have been expired. We are hoping for investment at the state level that would hopefully bring up the levels of eviction prevention funding, primarily going through our partners at Community Action. But the first bullet, as you describe, actually speaks to reduction in revenue that could come from federal funds or other state programs that would impact current service levels.
levels. In this case, with federal funding, we're somewhat concerned about our emergency housing voucher program that has housed, currently housed about 70 to 100, I'm not exactly sure what the correct number is, households who were previously homeless, and HUD has notified us that they are going to increase, sorry, they're going to ramp down that program much sooner than previously expected. So that's an example of unanticipated revenue reductions that would have a direct impact. I want to stress that these would be one-time investments, so we wouldn't be able to sustain that program permanently. We would be able to stabilize that program until we figured out a ramp-down plan for the impacted households.
I think you got to it.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think I made my comments mid-stream with the SHS and Dr. Baker. On the questions around the one-time funding framework, I'm actually really impressed with the thoughtfulness with which you all have put this together. You thought of many things I probably wouldn't have thought of, and I think you have clearly put thought into what is proposed, and I think it makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate that, and I'm supportive of the framework that you've drafted.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd just like to quickly respond to what Commissioner Snyder said and add to that, in that as much trouble and as much problems that we've had with forecasts and fund gaps, I believe that that experience has really led you to this priority setting, and you know, if there's any remote silver lining, thank you for doing this work in anticipation of how we move through our next phases. So I do appreciate it, and the reflection that these priorities show is really important, and it's real, so thank you. Commissioner Willie, any thoughts?
Go right ahead.
So I'll close things out. We have at least four of us that are approving of this investment framework, and I'm just wondering, rather than having you back again to present the same information for us to approve the framework, can we just do it tonight?
I think we could provide that direction.
So, would someone like to make a motion that we approve this one-time funding investment framework and process as highlighted tonight?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And I'll just add, there was a lot packed in tonight, really appreciate the presentation from all five of you. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for joining us in person tonight. Please keep up the great work. You and your team are making huge strides in attending to the needs of our precious community members, so thank you for what you do each and every day. Thank you for helping us on this journey together.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to the action section of tonight's meeting, and the first topic up is the 2025 Emergency Medical Services Emergency Transportation Rate Increase. And we have some other staff experts here to tell us about this recommendation. I know we have had a work session on this, but tonight's the actual formal, here's the proposal, let's take action.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mira Samantha, I use she/her pronouns, I'm the Director of Health and Human Services, and as the Chair said, we have had a work session on this topic. But with us tonight is Adrian Donner, our Program Supervisor with Public Health, who oversees our Washington County EMS program, and also Rob McDonald, our guest from AMR, who's going to be doing part of the presentation along with Adrian. So they'll be sharing some follow-up information that you asked during the work session, and then be asking if you approve the resolution order for the rate increases. So I will turn it over to you, Adrian.
Thank you. Chair Harrington, Commissioners, nice to see you again. You'd think I'd be used to using this thing by now. So for a little bit of context, and for folks watching online, our May 13th work session was recorded, so we put some of the information from that presentation, which can be watched anytime, at the end of the slide deck as well for just supplemental information to save time in the presentation today. We will cover some background and some current situation, as well as the proposed rate increase and some decision considerations with that increase. So for a little bit of background, and to just bring everyone along in our storytelling journey, our EMS system in Washington County has some really nice, unique features. Our partners in, at 911, with AMR, with Metro West, and with the fire agencies, come together monthly to talk about the system, to look at what we're doing, to find ways to make it better. This is pretty unique, even in the tri-county region, we probably bring the most partnership together to the table, and having those folks there just shows a real commitment to making the system work really well. One of the big ways we see this every day is in our dual response. So a caller in Washington County is likely to get a response from both their local fire departments, or the local fire departments, wherever they're calling, and AMR. These teams work together daily, they train together in our multi-agency training each year, and if the fire agency transports, they transport the same rate that's approved by the county for the exclusive 911 contract. So this rate today affects the fire departments as well if they end up transporting a critical Over the last two years, we have been in a pretty constant state of system enhancement. We have been looking at the system that we have, we've been trying to identify ways with the partners to make it the best system we can. We have, we have space to go still, but over the last two years, we've implemented the tiered system with both advanced and basic life support responding to get the right resources to the right people. We've implemented clinical compliance measures, which is pretty novel, and really to look at how the quality of care is for cardiac arrest patients in Washington County. We implemented First Watch, which is a way for us to really harness the power of data to analyze and improve the performance across the system. And then finally, of course, most recently, implemented Nurse Navigator to really provide better options for those folks who need medical care, but maybe not with an ambulance ride to the emergency department. For a quick background, the 911 system in Washington County is largely fee-for-service, so that means that the AMR earns primarily all their funds through the provision of ambulance transport rides to the emergency department and the associated mileage with that. This is not the way it works everywhere in the country. There are many counties or cities across the nation that do supplement the 911 systems through a tax-based subsidy, those kind of other funds going into the system. In the tri-county regions, they're all fee-for-service, so they're all similar to what we do. I think the most jurisdictionally close one to us that does a subsidy is Seattle, which does a subsidy through a tax. Additionally, the conversation today doesn't affect the county budget at all. We receive a franchise fee that helps fund the EMS program to do the contract administration. So while there are lots of benefits to having a large ambulance provider, I'm going to pass the mic to Rob to talk about some specific ones.
Thank you, Adrian. Can you hear me? Great. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Trese, County Commissioners. I wanted to thank you for the invitation to speak tonight. I want to take a brief moment to acknowledge my AMR colleagues in the room who have come in support. I also want to acknowledge Frank Hildebrand, who is here with Teamsters 223, also here to support our efforts. For the record, my name is Rob McDonald, I am the Regional Director for AMR in Oregon. In response to the board's request for detail regarding GMR, AMR's efforts in the government affairs space, we provided the board with pre-read content that supports this presentation, hopefully you have that. To speak to it, at the federal level, the depth and breadth that AMR brings to bear provides us an intimate seat at the table regarding federal funding, regarding EMS support. We maintain a robust government affairs team to meet that mission. Given the uncertainty of federal funding, particularly considering the current administration in Washington DC, GMR/AMR have the unique position as the largest federal contractor of EMS in the country to be the point of the spear when advocating for sustainable funding. We don't take that role lightly. We're doing everything we can to inform the federal government that reimbursement at the federal level does not cover the cost of providing quality EMS care to the citizens AMR works under a comprehensive legislative plan to advocate for permanent funding models at the federal and state levels. We endeavor into this with data-driven arguments that reflect the true cost of providing accessibility to EMS care at a moment's notice. We appreciate key national partnerships with advocacy groups and trade organizations to sing in concert with us. While change at the federal level is slow to occur, our unified voice in Washington DC is raising the issue at every turn. What is important to note, EMS is really a small part of the overall medical care ecosystem in the US, where our advocacy must share time with almost every aspect of medical care that is advocating for sustainable reimbursement structures. In speaking again to requests from the board during the work session, I wanted to further explain the costs associated with providing emergency care, and that they're capital-intensive. As the largest national provider, we allocate usual and customary costs based on the size of the local operation and its needs in the space. The slide depicts the actual costs paid by the Washington County operations in 2024. The top four bullet points speak to direct costs that any provider will bear. These costs support the infrastructure that provides Washington County EMS complete visibility into our daily operations using GPS location, a strong interface with the county dispatch system, and computer-aided dispatch directly to the computer screen in our ambulance. It provides the legal, accounting, and human resources support to allow the operations to function directly, completely with regards to the law and contract requirements. Indirect costs contribute to the future sustainability of AMR through low or no-cost capital investment, government affairs advocacy, as I just described, and sound leadership through the ever-changing landscape that is EMS. With that, I will push this back to Adrian.
Thank you. So the way our fee structure works is each year, AMR receives an automatic regular and ordinary rate increase. It's based on a formulary in the franchise agreement. If AMR requests an increase outside of that regular and ordinary increase, the proposal is made to the EMS team, who reviews the facts and situation of the proposal, and if we support any portion of that proposal, we bring it to you, and ultimately, it's your board's decision to make. So this year, AMR is seeking an increase beyond the franchise agreement's formulary allowance, which this year comes out to 3.21%. This is due to increased labor costs, as well as to ensure long-term sustainability of the program. As a reminder, the original request was a three-year schedule with 13% in the first year and 30% in the second and third year, which brought them to profitability in year At your request, we're bringing the decision for year one today, and I would just point you to the graph below, it's a 13% increase starting July 1. I'm going to pass the mic back to Rob to talk about some of the challenges with a one-year decision.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the best way I can say this is that this isn't the solution to the actual problem. To use vernacular from our industry, this is going to do something that's going to slow the financial bleed being currently experienced. It'll provide the time for the board, for Washington County EMS, AMR, and all other stakeholders to perform the important work of establishing efficiencies in the system that contribute to long-term sustainability. October is an important date, as it's a precipice point for us this year, in that, in the contract notification timeline as outlined in the underlying contract, our success and our struggle through the next few months will inform both AMR and the Board of County Commissioners on the next prudent steps towards EMS sustainability in Washington County. The board raised an important question in the work session last. How will this affect the citizens of Washington County as it relates to out-of-pocket expenses related to EMS transport and care? As illustrated in this slide, government payers make up 73% of all payers in Washington County. These patients will not realize an increase in their out-of-pocket costs to access emergency medical care due to the regulations around government payers. Citizens who fall in a self-pay category, as seen in the graphic, are made up of citizens who have either made the decision based on their own economic means to self-insure illegally, or folks within the response area who just don't have the means to establish health care. AMR has a robust payment program for people with limited financial means. This will include compassionate care programs where costs can be mitigated through a write-off process if the patient meets the income requirements. Ultimately, like most of health care, private insurance and HMO plans are the entities who bear the increased costs incurred to provide quality health care. Any rate increase, to include the one before the board, will impact that payer as primary. This is why a single aspirin can cost as much as $20 when administered under the care in an emergency department. Cost shifting continues as the payer paradigm in this country, and it's very real, and it touches all aspects of medical care. Using this next slide to further explain the prior, with every increase in ambulance transport rates applied to a system, and due to the marginal impacts as determined by the various payer classes, AMR does not realize a dollar-for-dollar increase in revenue with an increase in rates. There is no realization of new revenue from the 73% of payers in Washington County who have government insurance, and the private payer typically falls into payment plans or payment forgiveness modalities, leaving the 17% of total transport volume in the county covered by private insurance and AMR as the obligatory entity to pay for an increase. AMR will realize only 6% to 8% increase in the total volume revenue. Improved efficiencies can help with future rate increase considerations. To be specific, the system needs focus on dispatch accuracy to assure the right resource responds to the right acuity. The system needs our hospital partners to commit 100% to improving the time it takes for an emergency department to accept the patients into their EDs and get those ambulances back on the street, ready to respond to the next call. Washington County, the Washington County EMS system is losing hundreds of hours of ambulance coverage to hospitals who encumber our ambulances waiting to transfer care of the patient to the emergency department.
So one of the things that Rob said was some of those system efficiencies, so we can, you know, really hit a path to sustainability through fee increase and through efficiencies. My team is committed to working on some of those efficiencies that we've been working diligently on for a while now, and a few are listed here and were mentioned earlier. The wall time or the wait time at the hospitals is a significant one that we're working to reduce, looking at how to improve the triage process so we don't have two ambulances dispatched to the same call, and continuing to increase the number of people who are triaged out through Nurse Navigator to better care for their specific situations. All these things and others that are being looked at pretty routinely in our system are things that can reduce the cost of running the system, so something that we are likely to come back in the future on, looking for support on new initiatives as we move forward. So some considerations with the one rate, one-year rate increase, if it's approved, the Washington- The Washington County EMS team will continue to partner with AMR to explore all system and efficiencies that can be immediately implemented. We also will reconvene with you before October to look at what those efficiencies are, how the system is, and how to get to a system that has long-term stability. AMR agrees to collaborate with us to look at profit-loss each year to make sure that the rates being asked for increase make sense. And then also, as mentioned, work on the compassionate care program to make sure that our most vulnerable have avenues to deal with the rates of transport. And now the questions to you. Do you have any questions or further information needed? And do you approve of the year-one 13% rate increase effective July 1?
The Board, first, let's see if anyone has any questions or need for further information.
So, when will this rate increase, if we approve it tonight, go into effect if it goes July 1 and we're going to meet in October? Is that really going to give us the time to understand what the impact has been and improvements, if there's any, planned?
Yeah, so the rate increase would start July 1. Between now and October, we'll be working to help develop a sustainable plan, whether it's through some efficiencies gained in the system or future rate increases.
The future year increases.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're going to see in October then what modifications can be made to the system. I realize it's not just all on AMR. It's going to be on some hospitals and maybe some other areas. But, yeah, because to me, again, the reason why I was opposed to the original increase of 13, 30, and 30 is that's just too much. We've got to figure out something else that doesn't have that impact, even though a good portion of your clientele wouldn't pay that. It's still a significant increase. So, that's what I'll look forward to hearing from you in October is how we can go about improving the system. The nurse part of it was great. Excited about finding out how that's impacted things and improved things as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll have one, or I have one. It's in our prior contracts for this cycle since the modernization. They've been three-year contracts? Isn't a three-year?
It's a five and then a three and then a three.
Okay. So, we've been through the five, now we're on...
We've just been through, we're just rounding the second year now.
Okay.
So, there's only been one rate increase.
Oh, but this was that, yes.
Just regular and ordinary.
Assessment and the out-of-cycle part. Right, right. Okay, great. Hence our opportunity tonight to approve the year-one rate and then come back in October towards having a year-two and three rate. Okay, all right. So, Board members, staff has made a recommendation to us, working with AMR, to approve a year-one 13% increase effective July 1, 2025, with the plan to bring us additional proposals out into the future in the October timeframe. Do we have a motion to approve the year-one 13% rate increase effective July 1, 2025?
Can, maybe you were intending that, I thought you were asking just if we had questions about the presentation, then we would have an opportunity to make other comments or deliberation before we move on this? Is that...
Now would be a very good time for that, sir.
Thank you. Chair, I want to thank you for putting some thoughtful points together based on our prior discussion. I appreciate it. It's very clear to me, both from my experience in EMS and from our conversations over the last couple of weeks, frankly, that there's a lot of waste in the system right now that is costing the entire system a lot of money. And I really don't think the $6 on $100 of charges, $6 to $8 is an effective way. I said that before. I'll say it again. That's why we've got to work on some other solution. I am, I don't think we're here to talk about details of proposals, but I realize that there may need to be carrots and sticks with some of the parts of the system that are costing the EMS system a lot of money, things in the healthcare system overall or in other parts of the overall system that is beyond just EMS. And I just want to recognize that. I hope that you all are starting work like now or have already started work on this. I know October is a very aggressive timeline. I think it's very clear why AMR needs that and needs to see how this can be sustainable. But again, and I'm kind of sharing this more to the county team, we've got to figure something else out because this is, we need a sustainable program. The figures AMR provided about what the direct and indirect charges were, were all very reasonable. I don't, I can't pick any kind of an issue with any of those things for the size of their operations. So, that tells me that the only other option is to get waste out of the system. So, I implore you to think big, and I'm supportive of the 13% rate increase now with the goal that we've got to get there with efficiency and other approaches. And that may be painful for other organizations.
We are big thinkers.
Say that again?
We are big thinkers.
Okay, excellent.
But there are only so many parts that we control, let alone influence.
Agree, but I think with some creativity, we can, I'd be happy to be a thought partner too. If you run out of ideas, let me know.
Any other Commissioner thoughts?
No thoughts. Chair Harrington, I was going to move the motion you made.
So, Commissioner Phi is making the motion to approve the year-one 13% rate increase effective July 1, 2025. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, our second action item for tonight is to approve the preliminary proposal for two five-year local option levies, the first being for the Washington County Cooperative Library Services, WCCLS, and the second for our countywide public safety services. Oh, welcome to our staff. You are good and fast. Thank you. Take it away.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Erin Calvert, and I am one of the Assistant County Administrators and am joined tonight by Lisa Tattersall, the Washington County Cooperative Library Services, or WCCLS, manager, to provide you with a presentation on the preliminary proposals for five-year local option levies for library and public safety. Your Board heard a lengthier version of this presentation earlier today at work session. So, tonight we have a brief presentation for the public who may not have been able to listen in earlier today, and the request for your Board to consider taking action and approving both the library levy and public safety levy preliminary proposals. In terms of the levy proposal process, and by way of background, you can see on the timeline that we've really been working on levy planning since about the fall of 2023. And at the Board's direction, we formed levy steering committees that have been meeting since last summer. We've worked our way through steering committee meetings, voter surveys, board work sessions, and briefings that resulted in the preliminary proposals that are before you tonight. We will return to your Board's meeting next week, June 3, and to ask you to consider draft ballot titles and explanatory statements for both levies. Steering committees were an integral part of the levies proposal development, providing critical input on the review of the levy financials, the recommendation of the new levy rates. They advised staff and EMC research on the timing and polling questions, reviewed polling results, made recommendations, and approved of the final proposals before you today. Their expertise, relationships with partners and stakeholders, and their commitment were all critical to the process and ultimately to the outcome we are seeking from our voters. We believe the work of the steering committees was important and helpful, and we want to thank your Board for that direction. I will now turn it over to Lisa Tattersall.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Thanks for the opportunity and thanks for the conversation about the preliminary library levy proposal at work session this morning. I'm just going to review briefly this evening to provide an opportunity for our community members to learn about the proposed library levy, which would run from fiscal year 2627 through fiscal year 203031. Libraries are Washington County's living rooms. Public libraries create a sense of social connection, support climate resilience, and offer lifelong learning and development, preparing children for school, and fostering a strong workforce in our county. Libraries are a beloved community asset and deliver vital services in a time of increasingly complex community needs. Libraries provide free family activities and community gathering spaces for civic engagement. We also help people access social services and community resources, help people connect to the internet, access technology, and become digitally literate. The library levy provides key funding for our cooperative library system in the county. Library service is delivered in partnership between our county, nine cities, and three nonprofit organizations. WCCLS, as a department of the county, provides funding, support services, and critical infrastructure to link these independently operated libraries into one countywide system that is available to all residents. This partnership to deliver service is known as the cooperative. The current library levy provides 45% of the revenue for WCCLS in fiscal year 2425, and the remainder of WCCLS funding is a transfer from the county's general fund, which is determined through the annual budget process. The current levy rate is 22 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, and the current levy expires in June 2026. This proposal recommends replacing the current 22-cent levy with a 15-cent increase to 37 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. The new levy, if referred by your Board to be on the ballot this November and if it is approved by voters, would be effective July 2026 through June 2031. Staff, did I go too far? Oh, thank you. Staff have been providing your Board with regular updates and seeking your Board's direction on the funding and governance process that WCCLS has been undertaking with our cooperative partners. The goals of this process are to improve service consistency and access across the county and to support community needs by creating a library system with a fiscally sustainable future. The system in our county relies upon the contributions of every partner in our cooperative. There is a strong commitment to partner collaboration in this data-driven process under your Board's leadership. The recommendations so far from the process have been supported by our partners and your Board and our foundational elements of this proposal. The proposal supports the Board's goal to address funding allocations for library operations, ensuring that all communities have access to a consistent base level of library service. This proposal reflects our partner agencies' need for a sustainable funding source for library operations, providing some stability in economically uncertain times. This proposal also addresses the increasing cost pressures that libraries are under as they provide service to a growing and diverse community with increasingly complex needs by increasing the efficiency of operations and service effectiveness. The proposal for your consideration this evening recommends a levy replacement rate of 37 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, which is an increase of 15 cents over the current rate of 22. This estimates the total five-year revenue at $188.9 million and estimates that the first-year revenue for fiscal year 2627 would be $34.7 million. For the average homeowner in Washington County, the first year's estimated levy cost would be around $129, and the estimated monthly cost in the first year for that same average homeowner would be about $10.75. It's important to note that this is the total cost should voters vote to replace the levy from the 22 cent to the 37 cent rate. The annual increase in cost from the current levy to the proposed replaced levy for the average homeowner would be just over $54 per year or an additional $4.55 per month. The proposed library levy replacement would help maintain and provide access to core services, including reading and learning support for kids and teens, including homework help for students, central services that efficiently link libraries together so users can browse collections and reserve materials for pickup at their nearest library, open hours and access to books and materials for everyone in our community, and children's reading events, including storytimes for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers. Thank you.
Okay, the public safety levy preliminary proposal covers the same timeline from July 1 of 2026 through June 30 of 2031. The levy provides critical funding for the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, Community Corrections, and Juvenile Services. Each of these departments playing a distinct but interdependent role in maintaining public safety in Washington County. The current public safety levy provides about 16% of the revenue for the public safety system in fiscal year 202425. The current rate is 47 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, and the current levy expires in June of 2026. This preliminary proposal continues a thread that we've all been talking about since the public safety briefing paper was written in late 2023 and even before that. And that is the notion of how the public safety ecosystem works in Washington County. We know that one part of the system can be significantly impacted by the other, and that as cases flow from the Sheriff's Office or law enforcement to the District Attorney's Office and eventually out to either Community Corrections probation or post-prison supervision or the Juvenile Services informal supervision or formal probation, there is an interdependence on these services that the courts and judges can impact, the availability or lack thereof for defense attorneys, any unfunded or underfunded state mandates that are passed on to the county. A well-functioning public safety system requires coordinated support across all components of the system. The preliminary proposal for a public safety replacement levy focuses on many of the key challenges that were identified in the briefing paper. Our community is facing a number of challenges that could threaten public safety across Washington County, including substance use disorder, jail capacity issues, increasing workloads and caseload sizes, the continued struggle to address unfunded mandates, and making sure that we provide funding for a workforce that can deliver on these and the many other important public safety services. Excuse me. In addition, we know that our general fund revenue has not been able to keep pace with our expenditures and that the increasing cost of delivering the current service level and like other departments at the county organization, public safety has faced multiple years of reductions which have impacted service levels and workloads. This hasn't allowed the system to grow commensurate with community need that also impacts caseload and workload sizes. This levy proposal underscores the need for current and enhanced public safety service levels and continuous improvement called for by your Board and the public safety and justice leaders. It's also supported in the focused work of our government relations team, which is also supported by the Board and other partner agencies. This proposal recommends a levy replacement rate of 66 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. This estimates the total five-year revenue at just over $329 million and estimates that first-year revenue in fiscal year 2627 at just over $60 million. For the average homeowner in Washington County, the first year's estimated levy cost would be around $230, and the estimated monthly cost in the first year for that same average homeowner would be about $19.17. Please note again, this is the total cost if voters vote to replace the 47-cent levy with the proposed 66-cent levy. The annual increase in cost for the average homeowner from the current levy would be about $89.90 or an additional $7.45 average per month. Levy funds will continue the core functions of public safety, and this measure will enhance funding for a wide range of countywide public safety services that include prosecuting child abuse and child pornography cases, combating the impact of deadly drugs like fentanyl, and dismantling drug trafficking organizations, preventing domestic violence, and expanding emergency assistance for victims harmed by it, fully funding the jail to keep those with more dangerous charges in court-ordered custody, investigating and prosecuting theft, car theft, break-ins, and graffiti, and preventing crime with mental health response teams, job training, employment, and addiction services to keep youth and adults from returning to the justice system. Next steps. This slide just illustrates our general approach to levy development, on the left side where we started at proposal development to where we are today through the preliminary proposal approval and the steps ahead in getting us to a target election date of November 4, The next steps pending tonight's approval of the preliminary proposals has us back before your Board meeting next week, June 3, to consider the draft ballot title and explanatory statements for both levies. In July, EMC Research will conduct our third voter surveys for both levies.
voter surveys for both levies, and then the plan would be to return to your board's work session in early August to review the survey results, and ask your board to direct staff on the development of ballot titles and explanatory statements, and then return again to your board's meeting on August 12 to ask for your approval of final ballot titles, explanatory statements, and the levy proposals. The deadline to file the measure is August 15, and this is the point where political restrictions would begin to apply for staff. And that completes our staff report. We're happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for the in-depth work session item that we had earlier this afternoon. Board members, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to contribute at this time? Nope, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the preliminary proposals for the five-year public safety local option levy and the preliminary proposal for the five-year library local option levy.
So moved.
Quick.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero, and so we continue to go forward together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work. All right, next, we have our second public communication opportunity for this evening's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with the Board of Commissioners for up to five minutes in individual, 30 minutes maximum. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. The first two we have is Brenda Brunetti and Jill Latre.
Hello, Ms. Barati. Feel free to start when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Brenda Barati, and I've lived in Washington County for 32 years. Today, I'd like to talk about efforts across the country to restrict voting, and I hope it serves as a, some context to the efforts to restrict voting here in Oregon. Between 2021 and 2024, at least 79 restrictive voting laws were passed across states, and in just 2024, at least 10 states enacted 19 restrictive voting laws. These measures fall into these categories: limits on mail-in and absentee voting, many states restricted mail-in voting, and the availability of drop boxes; stricter voter ID requirements, some states began or reinforced strict voter ID laws, potentially disenfranchising voters who lack the required ID; and voter purges, lawsuits challenged voter registrations leading to the removal of eligible voters from the rolls. The impact of these measures are as follows: reduced voter turnout, these tactics can deter eligible voters, especially those from marginalized communities; disenfranchisement, strict voter ID laws disproportionately affect people of color; and the erosion of the public trust. Claims and concerns concerning voter suppression can undermine voter confidence in the electoral process, and that is a direct affront to the very core of our democracy. We've seen a strong trend in bills that would require people to provide documentary proof of citizenship to register to vote. Often, only a birth certificate, a passport, or naturalization papers suffice. Only about half of Americans even have passports, and about 1 in 10 adult citizens don't have what's called ready access to one of these documents. That means they can present them in a single day. So if you lost your home and everything in it to a wildfire or a flood, you probably could produce one of these documents at the drop of a hat, or it's in a safety deposit box, and you didn't or couldn't get to the bank. It is already a federal crime for non-citizens to register and vote in federal elections. Voting by non-citizens is extraordinarily rare and usually a mistake. A Brennan Center of Justice study found that in the 2016 general election, across 42 jurisdictions and 23.5 million votes count, election officials only referred an estimated 30 incidents of possible non-citizen voting for investigation. That represents 0.0001% of the total votes. States already have multiple systems to ensure that only eligible U.S. citizens register and vote. Federal law requires states to conduct regular list maintenance to remove ineligible voters from the rolls. Many states also participate in the Electronic Registration Information Center, which enables states to compare their voter rolls across state lines to ensure lists are up to date. The National Voter Registration Act requires list maintenance be undertaken with due care and respect for the right to vote. It requires list maintenance to be based on verified data and to consider the impact on eligible voters. A notable characteristic of the intensive voter suppression efforts is where they occur. Most are centered in swing states where a few thousand votes can make a difference in an election outcome up and down the ballot. A new Georgia law allows private citizens to file mass challenges against other people's eligibility to vote. One woman has legally challenged more than 1,000 voters in one county. She questioned the eligibility of almost 700 students who were registered to vote at one of the country's oldest historically black colleges. In Detroit, teams of election security volunteers go door-to-door to verify people's addresses, and then file challenges based on what they find. Think about this: total strangers, unelected, not representing any official state, city, or county entity, show up at your door and start questioning you. That is voter intimidation. In Oregon, our system is fair and secure. There is no evidence of any widespread voter fraud here. We've used vote-by-mail for over 20 years, and remember, Oregonians voted for vote-by-mail overwhelmingly by a vote of over 2 to 1. Let's not mess with it.
Ms. Latre, you're up next.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I'm a resident of Washington County. This evening, I will continue to read from the executive order, "Preserving and Protecting the Integrity of American Elections," signed March 25, 2025. Section 4, Improving the Election Assistance Commission. Section A, "The Election Assistance Commission shall pursuant to 52 U.S. Code and consistent with all applicable law, take all appropriate action to cease providing federal funds to states that do not comply with the federal laws set forth in 52 U.S. Code, including the requirement that states accept and use the national mail voter registration form issued, including any requirement for documentary proof of United States citizenship adopted pursuant to Section 2 of this order. B, "The Election Assistance Commission shall initiate appropriate action to amend the Voluntary Voting System Guidelines 2.0 and issue other appropriate guidance establishing standards for voting systems to protect election integrity. The amended guidelines and other guidance shall provide that..." Voting systems should not use a ballot in which a vote is contained within a barcode or a quick-response code in the vote-counting process, except where necessary to accommodate individuals with disabilities, and should provide a voter-verifiable paper record to prevent fraud or mistake. Within 180 days of the date of this order, the Election Assistance Commission shall take appropriate action to: review, and if appropriate, recertify voting systems under the new standards established under subsection B of this section, and to rescind all previous certifications of voting equipment based on the prior standards. C, following an audit of the Help America Vote Act Fund expenditures conducted pursuant to 52 U.S. Code, the Election Assistance Commission shall report any discrepancies or issues with an audited state's certifications of compliance with federal law to the Department of Justice for appropriate enforcement action. D, the Secretary of Homeland Security and the Administrator of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, consistent with applicable law, shall, in considering the provision of funding for state or local election offices or administrators through the Homeland Security Grant Program, heavily prioritize compliance with the Voluntary Voting System Guidelines 2.0 developed by the Election Assistance Commission, and the completion of testing through the Voting System Test Labs accreditation process. We look forward to these changes being implemented, including the requirement for documentary proof of U.S. citizenship, and the review and recertification of voting equipment, if necessary, being implemented in Washington County and Oregon to comply with the federal laws and avoid any withholding of federal funds. Thank you.
Clerk Moss, who's next?
Next, we have John Woods and Charlie Henderson.
You're up, Mr. Woods.
Howdy, how are you? Long time no see. I'm busy up at the state level. I found it interesting, looking at all the proposals and all the millions of dollars that people were talking about the federal government and the state giving, Washington County. Like I said, oh, I'm sorry. Greetings, Chair Harrington and Vice Chair. I was rude. Sorry. Anyways, I was working up at the state level, talking to representatives, trying to understand where we are with all that's going on in Oregon. Today, there was an article in the Oregon Catalyst. I don't know if you've seen the Oregon Catalyst, but something caught my eye, and I was reading it. This is from State Senator Daniel Bonham, the minority leader in the Senate. "Oregon Has Lost More Than 2,000 Farms and 6,667,000 Acres of Farmland Since 2017." While legislators keep piling on new regulations and labor mandates, lawmakers warn it is not accidental. This is the beginning of the end for agriculture in the state. Meanwhile, the state's ag agency budget keeps growing as family farms disappear." That was published today. Here's the headline: "Oregon Is Expecting $755 Million Less in Revenue for the 2025 to 2027 Budget Cycle That Was Projected Just Three Months Ago." That is not including when the feds pull the plug. More than half of the Oregonians can't afford the cost of living. Oregon ranks 48th in the Nation for Business Friendliness. We have the second-tightest housing market in the country. The state is in midst of a manufacturing recession. We need to figure out, as Oregonians, whichever side the aisle is on, we cannot keep going towards the wall like we are. This thing here tells me we got a problem, and with the farmers shutting down, with the $755 million loss in revenue, I don't see how you're going to afford all of these programs: $329 million, $93 million, $30 million, $50 million, and that does not include whether the feds come in and shut it down, and they are looking at it very seriously. Like I said, I work down in the state capital. I have a lot of contacts there. They're concerned. The state is in the red. Washington County's in the red. Portland's in the red. How do we fix this? We can't continue to go on pretending that the crash isn't going to happen. We're headed for the wall, and we're going to get there fairly quickly. And I don't know why we keep hearing these programs and these projections when we know that we're all operating in the red. The taxes for the programs, $19, $10, that's $29. $237 for a household. Really? That's a tax. $237, and half of the Oregonians can't afford their cost of living? How do we justify that? How do we really justify that? I don't know how we do. Those people down in Salem don't know how we're going to justify it. We have a governor who's looking to steal a kicker to pay for wildfire costs. We have a legislative supermajority that's looking at taxing everything under the sun on the transportation bill. How do we continue to go down this road? I don't know how we do. I just see that we're going to crash, and we're going to burn, and it ain't going to be fun. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
All right. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Washington County Commissioners. My name is Charlie Henderson. I'm a veteran and a public servant, and I'm here this evening to speak on something that I don't think has been discussed enough in this chamber, and that is election security, he said facetiously. In all seriousness, though, I try to tune in to as many BCC meetings as I can to get a better sense of what's going on in my community, and to the public testimonies to understand what my neighbors are most concerned about. Now, of course, there are countless things that we could be having robust public discussions on, such as the crumbling of democracy, illegal detaining of legal residents, now two judges, targeting protesters standing up against Israeli genocide, the insane cost of housing, the stripping away from funding for Medicaid, Medicare, or research, or the attacks on Social Security, just to name a few. Instead, week after week, I tune in virtually, and it seems that 90% of the oxygen in the room is being taken up around concerns for election integrity. One might think that this is primarily about ensuring that voting is made as open as possible, and that we're fighting to put protections in place to prevent outside forces from making it harder to vote in our elections. Unfortunately, after reading through many of the materials that are presented in these discussions and listening to many of the testimonies here, it's clear that these aren't that. The core claims seem to center on the idea that elections aren't secure, and that there is mass fraud taking place as a result. They speak about the dangers of mail-in voting and drop boxes, or that there's a mountain of evidence of illegals and nonresidents going to the polls to cast ballots, or that machines used have been tampered with, and whenever they're involved, it automatically means that you can't trust the results. Their solution to these concerns is to do away with mail-in voting and force people to vote in person on election day with approved documentation that could in no way ever be forged, and for all votes to be counted and scrutinized by trained ballot counters, ensuring that if names don't match perfectly, or if signatures aren't similar enough, that these obvious fraudulent ballots can be challenged and thrown out. So let's go through these. There has to date been zero evidence of mass fraudulent voting in this country. Does fraud happen sometimes? Of course, and even under their recommended steps, fraud could still occur. But committing voter fraud comes with heavy fines, imprisonment up to several years, and if you're not a legal resident, deportation. And especially in this climate, where are all these people trying to stay under the radar and not be picked up by ICE who are then risking it all to go vote in an election? That's ridiculous. As a veteran who had to vote several times while stationed away from my home of record, I relied on mail-in voting to ensure regardless of where I was serving, my vote still counted. This is true here in Oregon as well. The biggest concern for mail-in voting isn't a tidal wave of fake ballots overturning an election, but rather that we have a functioning post office that can handle the load. But is anyone here trying to make this process more reliable? No. On the voting machines, I'm with you. If there's evidence that these air-gapped machines that are tightly controlled have been compromised, we should conduct forensic investigations, identify those responsible, and hold them accountable. Lying about this probably won't cost you 3/4 of a billion dollars like it did Fox News, but I'd still recommend hard evidence be presented first. The bigger concern is mass disinformation campaigns on Facebook, MSN, Twitter, and other social media platforms, and no one's stopping you from going to your local polling place and voting in person. What mail-in voting does do, however, is provide citizens who cannot make it to the poll on election day for any number of reasons the ability to participate in our democratic system. You don't want to be registered? Good news. You can opt out of the process entirely. If your goal is to strip those voters that rely on vote-by-mail of their ability to participate, it's clear that you're less concerned about voter integrity and more concerned about voter suppression. And what is the ultimate response to all of this? It's to support legislation like the SAVE Act, which would seek to actively strip the vote from as many people as possible by requiring the following: ID consistent with a real ID, it's about $30; a valid passport, it's about $130; one that personally pisses me off, a military ID WITH military record, showing that the service member was born in the U.S., because I guess it's not enough to wear the uniform and have a CAC. Better keep your papers on you at all times. Government-issued ID that shows place of birth in the United States and the name you were born with. So, sorry, trans-Oregonians, sorry, married women, sorry, kids in foster care, sorry, homeless people, sorry, veterans in active duty, sorry, poor people. If you don't have the exact paperwork Republicans want you to have, you don't have a right to vote anymore. Let me conclude with this. Let me conclude with this: our elections are under threat. The issue is that it's under threat from Republicans that realize that the fewer people that vote, the better they will usually do. That's not my opinion. That's something that's been stated by top Republican officials. That's why, rather than coming here and fighting the board to push for voter regression laws that would see voting made more difficult and costly, I encourage everyone to realize what the actual threat to democracy is and push our representatives at every level of government to enact a legislation that puts guardrails in place to stop corrupt politicians at the top from making our lives collectively worse. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to discussions on how Washington County is going to work to increase voter turnout and protect mail-in voting.
Thank you.
All right. The last in-person we have is Elaine Woods.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and County Commissioners. My name is Elaine Woods, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about something that hasn't been mentioned this evening. You've heard, we have all heard of the needs of the homeless and other organizations and departments that need more money. Public safety cuts affect the people who live here today. I strongly object to your budget priorities, which will affect our future as a community. The Child Support Services, which enforces court decisions to require absent parents to pay the other parent who is trying to care for the child left behind. This program was the only way some single parents could afford adequate food, clothing, and give shelter to their children. This program had been operating for over 50 years and had consistently earned recognition as the highest-performing child support program in Oregon. Our district attorney has stated that this program cost the county significantly less than the budgeted amount of $562,000 due to grant reimbursement, and had been bringing in around $26 million in support obligations for each year. Children who have been abandoned by a parent are emotionally damaged. If the remaining parent is not able to supply the child's needs, the child is more likely to succumb to depression, school and learning issues, becoming vulnerable to addiction, failure, and becoming the homeless of the future. You have made a huge mistake, which will impact this community in the future. Please rethink your choices and priorities, which will, could increase the number of homeless in our future. The children need a voice too. So thank you very much for your listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have one on Zoom, Amy Babcock. Amy, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're a little faint. If you get a little closer in, please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Babcock. Good evening, Chair Harrington and the Commissioners. My role in Washington County is I am the Director of Operations for the Domestic Violence Resource Center. We were made aware late last week that the current safety levy proposal eliminates the Domestic Violence Resource Center as a recipient of those funds. I'm coming to you to express the concern, not only of our agency, but our community partners in having the elimination of our services. The funding that is provided navigates our emergency shelter services and emergency services throughout the Washington County. Without this service, it limits our ability to navigate support services for domestic violence survivors and their children. It limits our ability to navigate providing support services to our community partners that look like the hospitals, social workers, the law enforcement agencies who navigate our after-hours. It limits our ability to navigate services within the New Family Peace Center. And as a founding partner of the Family Justice Center, soon to navigate to the Family Peace Center, I am a huge supporter of that organization and the constructs of having all of the victim services within the Family Peace Center, but taking away our ability as the only domestic violence agency in Washington County, the only domestic violence shelter in Washington County, not to mention the only shelter within the Family Peace Center partners, would drastically change the landscape of services for domestic violence survivors and their families. Within the shelter, we don't just navigate safe housing, we navigate everything from toothbrushes to clothing to food. We have moved over 95% of our survivors in our services into safe, independent housing in the last year. We have navigated support services with our community partners such as SARC and providing absolute on-the-spot response to law enforcement who are engaging in domestic violence in the community. It would be detrimental to our agency, it would be detrimental to the community to remove our ability to navigate services within Washington County for victims of violence and domestic violence and their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. And I think that brings to an end our 30-minute public comment period for this evening's meeting. Next, I'll move on to board announcements. We're staring at the month of June already. So next Tuesday, June 3rd, we'll start our work session at 9:00 a.m., pause that, then have a board meeting starting at 10:00, and then reconvene our work session after that. On Friday evening, June 6th, we're having a special meeting. This is once again a special meeting between the Washington County, Clackamas County, and Yemhill County Boards of Commissions, this time for the House District 26 replacement. That meeting will start at 6:30 on Zoom. On Tuesday, June 10th, we'll start the work session at 9:00 and keep going, and then after the lunch break, reconvene in a Clean Water Services work session starting at 1:00 p.m. On Thursday, June 12th, we'll be having our nearly monthly roundtable, starting at 9:00 a.m. Then the following Tuesday, June 17th, we'll start our work session at 9:00 a.m. Thank you for the music accompaniment. Pause that, then go into the board meeting at 10:00 a.m. And it is a big business day that day, as we'll be going through the adoption of multiple budgets, and that will include public hearings on the full assortment: Washington County and Surface District for lighting, number one, the enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District for the Washington County Housing Authority, and for Clean Water Services. All in one day. Tuesday, June 24th, we'll start our work session in the afternoon, 2:00 p.m., and a board meeting in the evening, 6:30 p.m., just like tonight. And then we're staring at the month of July. We will not be holding a set of meetings on Tuesday, July 1st. We're going to be taking a bit of a break and wish everyone a happy Independence Day holiday. That's it for me for board announcements. Anything else from any other commissioners? Nope. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Good night, folks.